Good evening, I'd like to call to order the March 26th Town Council Committee of the Whole Meeting. All councilors are present with the exception of Councilor Obrey who is out of town. Calendar and Communications, Councilor Baumgartner.
Good evening. Let's see, I met with the Town Manager late last week to discuss the ordinance that we had discussed last week regarding the, actually it's a three-part ordinance, responsible contracting, boosting apprenticeship programs here in town, as well as the Uweich Theft Ordinance. So, I know he's continuing conversations now with the Town Attorney and it was a very excellent conversation and looking forward to that ordinance kind of moving through the process. Other than that, you know, I had a very lovely coffee with Conrad to kind of get a rundown of the budget process. I was appointed to the council after the budget season in Sut came to a halt, so this will be my first budget season and very much looking forward to it and working with residents in the town to get their feedback on, on the process, so.
Councilor Park.
See Wendy.
Oops, I'm sorry.
I actually attended the Grosso-Tech St. Patrick's Day meal for lunch, that was very good, so thank you to Grosso-Tech and their culinary staff. I also attended the groundbreaking at Groton Bible Chapel on this past Sunday, wonderful event held and many people attended, so. I had TVCCA this evening and our meeting with the Rules Committee and we had a special meeting last week with the City Council.
Very good. Councilor Franco.
I attended the Mystic Irish Parade, which was very nice, very well attended. I attended the Trails Task Force Meeting. I went to an open house at Hillary Company, I think it was like a business after hours. I, Beautification Committee, attended the Fitch Sports Booster Club and the Fitch Baseball Fundraiser and I actually went up to the middle school property up here at Merit and to check things out and they started clearing some land, not exactly sure what they'd done and I have also heard that one step was completed where they were looking for some kind of artifacts and they hadn't found anything of substance, so, that's what I've done.
Councilor Heath.
I also joined, I attended the Joint City-Town Discussion on the Highway Budget. I met with the Town Manager John Burke to discuss the Plastics Reduction Ordinance, met with Councilor Baumgartner, also attended the St. Patrick's Day Parade in Mystic, wouldn't have seen me because I was behind the more outgoing Joseph Delacruz, so he got all the attention, well deserved.
Oh, Delacruz.
Oh, Delacruz, my apologies. We just had a Rules Committee meeting to discuss a couple little housekeeping issues with our rules and we attended, I attended the open house with the SBA for Hillary Company.
Councilor Atwood.
I joined Councilor Parker at the Grosso-St. Patrick's Day Lunch, corned beef was excellent. I was at the City Council Meeting not only for the Roads Budget Review but also for our quarterly joint meeting. I attended the SEET Southeastern Area Transit Meeting up in Norwich. I attended a Council of, Connecticut Council of Municipalities Conference a week ago. I was in the St. Patrick's Day Parade, I guess that was it.
Councilor Schmidt.
Yes, I also attended the City-Town Budget Meeting as well as the Combination City-Town Council Meeting. Listened, I listened to the Irish Parade because I can hear everything at my house, don't have to go downtown. And I have received several emails about the Mystic Noank Library and telephone calls.
I have no report.
No report. Thank you. I attended the same City-Town Highway Meetings, the after-hours at Hillary. I attended the meeting that Thayer Mayan presented to the neighbors at the Bill Memorial Library and in general was very warmly received and people are excited about it. I also attended a meeting with Dr. Warren Burrows who's organizing a committee to move forward his ideas for the Groton Family Farm and there's a really good group of people and he has some great plans that we're hoping to see through to fruition and one of them involves our first guest this evening, Southeastern Connecticut Cultural Coalition, so that's exciting. And I just wanted to say, I got notice that Ed and Kim Johnson received an award from the Noank Historical Society, the Anna Rathbun Award for Extraordinary Service, so, thank you Mr. and Mrs. Johnson. All right. Approval of minutes, and I think, yes, I'm sorry.
Sorry, with regards to the minutes, I just want to make a clarification.
Let's, let's let somebody move them first and then we'll clarify. So everybody should have a separate sheet in, but Councilor Baumgartner, would you move acceptance of the minutes, please?
Certainly. I'll make a motion to approve the Committee of the Whole Minutes of March 12th, 2019, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Franco. Councilor Heath.
Right. I just want to apologize to Mr. Johnson and to the Noank Public Garden Group because in the minutes it says that, I noted there were $80,000 in past pledges to that group and I wasn't clear, this was before my time here in Groton and I apologize if I, you know, insinuated anything. It was actually the Prospect, Friends of Prospect Hill, who may be related to a developer who was like running around town, so just to make sure everybody understands, Mr. Johnson, the Noank Group, they were not, there's no mismanagement of money, donations, anything like that, it's just a misstatement on my part, I kind of merged the lines, if that makes sense, so apologize for that.
Thank you. And also everyone should, as I said, everybody should have the Corrected Page Six and there was an error in the tally box for the vote, it had Councilor Obrey listed as present, she was not here for that. So on the corrected sheet that's highlighted in yellow, everyone should see the correct vote tally box, that does not include Councilor Obrey, okay? So when we vote, we will be voting on the minutes as amended. Is there any further discussion on the minutes for the meeting of March 12th? Seeing none. All those in favor of the minutes as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. We are at eight councilors present. All right, and as I said earlier, we're going to be shuffling the agenda a bit, so the very first item on the agenda is 2019-197, which is the Make Music Day Presentation, which is on page 25 in your packet, please. There's no action required unless later on, after you hear the presentation, you wish to make some kind of motion, so at this point, would you like to introduce yourself, please?
I'm Maggie Barry, I'm the Executive Director of the Southeastern Connecticut Cultural Coalition and I can't wait till after June 21st when you all can report that you attended fantastic events on June 21st for Make Music Day. So I wanted to let you all know about the day itself. For those of you who don't know, the Southeastern Connecticut Cultural Coalition, we are your regional arts and cultural alliance. We are here to make sure our 550 partners, museums, performing arts center, historical societies, creative businesses, galleries and artists are all thriving. And so we're kind of a behind-the-scenes agency, we act like a chamber but for the creative sector and this region alone, the New London County, the nonprofit arts and cultural agencies contribute $168 million to this economy, so we pack a punch here. They generate 10.5 million in local and state revenue, just in New London County alone, and we have lots of other data to show why they should be valued in your community, part of your economic development plan, and why they should be taken seriously and days like this coming up are such a great way to showcase all of the assets that we have in this region. So in, actually, Make Music Day is an international celebration. It began in France in the 1980s, it has grown over time, today in Paris, it is a national holiday, Make Music Day, 80% of the residents in Paris participate in some way, shape or form in Make Music Day, and it has grown to be a worldwide event. It is now in over 700 cities across the globe and in the United States we're at 250 cities and growing, I think, 200 cities and growing. And so in 2018, the Make Music Day Alliance based out of New York City contacted the Office of the Arts in Connecticut, we are one of the Office of the Arts field offices, we serve as one of nine regional service agencies for the Office of the Arts to support DECD, and they asked if Connecticut wanted to be involved in Make Music Day finally. And so the Office of the Arts and about 11 peers across the state said yes to being participants and become Alliance members and began this process of introducing Make Music Day to Southeastern Connecticut. So it was, it was kind of a crapshoot for us last year, we did not know how, what this was going to turn out, but what I wanted to show you was a video that Rick Koster and Peter Huapi from the day actually did, they actually, you'll see the video, but they captured Make Music Day in New London. New London really hit it out of the park last year on the first year, not surprisingly for New London, but I wanted to show you this video that really explains what Make Music Day is.
Now. Shanti.
Let me see. There you go. Is he coming?
Mm-hmm.
He's behind you, isn't he?
He's behind you.
Add back to the music video.
What about the power of music? What if music is like a good virus, the sort that somehow infuses its positive properties into the host cells of everything it comes in contact with? That's the principle behind the international Make Music Day, which happened worldwide Thursday. The idea? Yeah. That music is joyous and infectious, can collectively raise our spirits in a really good fashion. It was the first year for organized Make Music Day participation in Southeastern Connecticut. New London alone, over 40 artists performed in a variety of venues over a 10-hour period and we saw them all. 10 hours of walking precisely laid-out grid with a pedometer measuring 6.7 miles and two distinct blisters. The artists range from high school rappers, high school violinists, to bagpipe duo, solo guitarists, to a nine-year-old ukulele star, cover bands, the stoner psych group, the most polished and professional bands in the area.
You can feel the energy and the enthusiasm for this event and, you know, happily getting caught up in it. I'm hoping to check out as much as I can until I fall over and...
It's just good for, good for New London and it's good for me too, you know, it brings people down here into my business that may not necessarily know I'm even here, to have so many places and so many businesses saying, "Yeah, man, let's do this, let's all get involved."
Live music clubs and restaurants, sure, the private businesses, street corners, parks, shelters, theaters, any and all of these hosted players, in the rhythm and the flow of everyday life, the audience turned out, spontaneous appreciation by citizens, varied in terms of size, but it was there.
I saw these guys just playing music outside and I was like, "That's really cool." Even though like they might not think they had a good response, I drove by with my kids in the car thinking, "This is really awesome, there's just music happening in the street."
Alone in the world. We played up on the sidewalk and, and we just connected with about probably 30 different people as they walked by or they would wave to us from their cars and stuff, it was great.
There were fans of particular artists, fans of music in general, fans of the city of New London, even folks on a break from the trains leaving and arriving from the waterfront train station.
We went to go get a drink and we found out it was Music Day. We're going to make the best of it.
One thing was impressively apparent, Make Music Day resonated with the musicians as well as the observers in a fashion that went beyond the opportunity for just select artists to play another gig for the people that always come and see them play.
I saw a guitar player, I saw a pianist, singers.
I saw, saw a drummer that made beats on a laptop and with drums at the same time, that was real cool.
Well, I'm trying something new today for the first time as a solo hip-hop electronic artist, so, Make Music Day, it's a great way to network.
It opens your mind to different types of music, so you can use it in your own.
So, you know, it feels great just to be able to perform to people, you know, be part of this big, this big nationwide thing.
Music is a big part of our diversity and culture and it's really important. I think that us as humans, that we make, we make sure to make music part of our lives because it strengthens your brain and it honestly just makes me feel good.
At the end of the day and end of the night, we wondered, had we actually seen and heard all of the music to be made on Make Music Day in New London? Turns out there was just one more performance and just because it felt good to make music.
So, that video was actually a surprise to us, we did not know that they were making that video and I think they didn't tell us about it because they didn't know what they were going to run into. And so when we found this video and they sent it to us, we sent it off to National and it made it to the National website and they'll be using it hopefully for promotion this year. It captures Make Music Day fantastic, beautifully. And so, so we did very little promotion last year because we didn't really have the budget for it, we didn't really know what to expect, we were learning the software, and so in the end, actually, they had a really concerted effort in New London, they put some money into it in the city of New London and there were three people who really knew all the musicians and really corralled the musicians to get them involved in the New London Main Street. And then we had a lot of events up in Sprague, Norwich, downtown, Mystic actually had, conducted orchestra by the Eastern Connecticut Symphony Orchestra at Mystic River Park, which was great, but really the bulk of the events were actually in New London. So really this year, we want to see this really spread out. We know that New London's going to shine just because they have such a rock-solid, no pun intended, rock-solid musicians industry there, but truly we want to see this broaden and really reach out. We had over 80 performances last year in about 40 or 50 different locations, the bulk of those in New London but also across the area. So just to tell you a little bit about how it works and what we're asking from the municipalities, and I'll bring you through to our website in just a moment, but really what it takes is, we need to find coordinators and people in your cities and towns who can help us reach those musicians and those businesses and those parks and rec people who can help identify spaces and those people who know where there's already existing music events that will take place. It's a Friday this year, it's always on June 21st, Summer Solstice every year, last year it was on a Thursday, so this year it's on a Friday, and so there, you know, the opportunity just to weave in existing events that'll be taking place is possible. But essentially what we are asking for is for municipalities to both waive permitting fees that day, right, for city and town-owned properties, if there's a park and a plaza, waiving any permit fees for any performances on that day. Insurance is something we'd want to talk about, is how can we have the insurance covered for that space as well? If you have a busking law, you would want to not have any problems with buskers that day, so if there are musicians on the streets and they want to put a hat out, they're able to do that without any problem. The idea is to capitalize on you all knowing who your businesses are, where music would be great to have, and your public spaces, and then the people in town who can help us reach those musicians who are here. So we're looking for connectivity from you all and then also the ability to make music happen that day. So when we look at town spaces and greens and plazas, it's up to you all to help program that space and identify those and help us make that happen. The, I think I've just mentioned, there's also opportunities, so because this is an international day, there are a lot of national funders out there who are looking for ways to promote their music in their business. And so we have, I think, about seven or eight national organizations who, for example, will send 100 harmonicas or 100 ukuleles or songbooks or drumsticks and they're willing to donate them and you give them, as long as you have an audience participation event with a leader who can teach a harmonica lesson or have a very player harmonica for half an hour, so once we coordinate a space and have a person who can do that instruction or lead that, a drum circle, a song singing circle, anything that's audience-engaging, we can usually go and get some instruments from those available ones and they'll send them out for free, they're looking for opportunities, and then they make it to the national calendar, those events make it onto the national calendar as well. So the benefit to musicians is that musicians get promotion and they connect with each other like you saw in the video. The benefit to venues is you get people coming to your venue and the more areas that you have where they're kind of consolidated, where people can walk, like in New London, people were really walking and finding music on corners, the idea is to really think about strategically where you want to make music happen. Anybody can make music and register to be a venue, so we are inviting homeowners with a great backyard, businesses with a sidewalk, anybody who has a, you know, a driveway that's big and, I mean, you can truly register any venue, you want your front porch, your back porch, as long as it's accessible and it has to be free of charge. So they cannot charge anybody to attend any events. Any events you know of that have music that day, the only way they can be included is if they are free of charge. So just know that there's some ticketed events that, you know, we just have to, they can't be part of this. And so, looking, so, the process, just so you understand, there's a whole software on our, on our website and I'll pull it up in a minute, but it's makemusicday.org, Southeastern Connecticut. Everybody registers, the venue registers and then the artists register and they basically tell the, create a profile, you know, "I'm a musician, I play the guitar, I need an outlet, I don't need an outlet, I want to play during these hours and I'd like to do this," and then a venue will also create a, a profile saying, "I have a park," or, for example, Groton Family Farm, "We have a family farm, it has parking, we're going to have a food truck, we have equipment, we can do electricity, we have a rain or shine, you know, area," and then basically the venues and the musicians kind of date essentially on there and say, "I'd like to play at your place and I'd like to kind of, you know, check your place," and they watch each other's videos, they check each other out, and then once they agree to terms and they both kind of click on, "I agree to playing at this time at this place," it then solidifies it and moves it onto the calendar. So for us, we're just monitoring the whole system. So our, right now, we're in the recruitment stage, we need venues and so for Groton to be participating, you need to help us recruit venues to register as places and then also help us find those musicians who are in town, who should be a part of it. And this can be anybody who owns a music business, a music industry, you know, your school, your choirs, your bands, your students are no longer, shouldn't be in school by June 21st this year, so, you know, emerging musicians, professionals, but we really want to have everybody register. And then over the course of the next four to five weeks, the matchmaking takes place, the calendar gets solidified in June, early June, and then we promote the heck out of it in those last four to five weeks. I think I've, just to show you so that you all can see what, we have on our website, on the Make Music Day website, there are, there's a photo gallery of Vinnie Scranio from Hygienic took, I'd say, 1,000 pictures last year and drew, and they went up, Old Lime participated, Sprague participated, Groton participated in some parts, Mystic, Stonington, Waterford, I think we had 11 towns that participated in some capacity, but sometimes it was just one or two events. But just so you can see, we're going to, all traffic kind of drives into this, to our Make Music Day, you can go to makemusicday.org and it'll eventually lead you back down to our region and our page, all the cities and towns look exactly the same just with different words on them and then our own pictures. But essentially all the information that somebody needs is on this page, about the day, how to register, how to participate, become a sponsor if you're an artist or musician, so everything kind of just goes from here. So the opportunities we would need to know about in advance, we have a dedicated volunteer who's helping to match-make really great venues with those large audience participation. The bigger the potential audience, the more we're going to put our effort into it. We will have hopefully some monies available, a small amount of monies, that we'll receive hopefully from the National Alliance, that we can make available for small things like signage or equipment. There is also money that's available from the unions for unionized musicians who want to play and want to be paid. People can pay musicians if they want to, there's nothing stopping, we prefer that all musicians get paid for the time, but on this particular day, we do ask musicians to often just give it up for free sometimes. And so everything is on the site, everything kind of gets going and we ask that you help promote it, just promote the awareness of this day into your community and then help recruit those artists musicians. If there's one person who's a dedicated person, your Parks and Rec or somebody here that we can talk with directly, we'll work with them to help, make sure they know how to use the software and register and help with anything along the way. But the big thing is really the waiving of any permitting fees in public spaces, insurance issues and questions about that, any laws and anything else we have to do to make it happen. You want to be able to invite your community to make music that day and make it possible.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention Mayor Hedrick from the city is with us tonight and he was here to listen because I believe you're also interested in participating in Make Music Day. So, I just, Dr. Burrows at the Groton Family Farm has registered already as a venue and he intends to have a whole day of activities at the farm. He's looking for musicians to match up with him and he's going to, as Ms. Berry said, there's going to be a food truck there and it's just kind of a kickoff to try to get people over to the farm and create a sense of place over there. Exactly. So do you have questions for Ms. Berry? Councilor Franco.
So, who brings the stages and the equipment?
So the venues would have to deal with that. So in New London, they actually, the city of New London put money down and had the coordinator set up, so they had their waterfront district person who already organizes their major events there. They had their stage and knew how to do it, they just utilized what they had in place in terms of staff and outreach and contractors. And so they knew they had the equipment, it was just a matter of putting some money in to making sure they could have it that day. So they programmed three spaces in New London for that day, Parade Plaza, the waterfront and then another park, two of which did not need a stage, one of them was already staged already in place because it was June and it was the summer months, they'd already planned to have it out for the whole year, and Make Music Day was the launch of their summer music kind of concert series. So they used it as a way to launch an entire summer worth of music in New London, so they springboarded off of that and so it was an investment for them.
And who cleans up afterwards?
Well, that's up to the, so the venue would also be responsible for their own site, so if it's a city or town-owned property, that would be something that, this would be new for us in terms of figuring out some of those questions. We didn't hear anything last year about anybody making a mess in a public space, which is good, but it's something that if we anticipate bigger crowds, as they get bigger, we'd have to start dealing with these issues. So that would be a new question for us, but I would think it would go back to whoever owns the property.
Okay.
It's a good question.
Thank you.
I'd love to see we have 3,000 people coming to Groton and then we'll have to deal with the trash problem. Right now, I'm not too worried about a big trash problem, but it is a good question to have.
Thanks. And a lot of the places are private venues, so they would be responsible for providing the infrastructure for the musicians and for the cleanup, so, it would be, for those, it would just be a matter of us promoting it. We would have to decide as a council if we want to promote this or if we want to try to get something at our parks, at our venues, whatever.
I don't think the goal is to be, bring in a huge stage and make a whole day. The idea is to really bring musicians in and have them in very organic places and parade plazas where they can, really, the biggest issue is not so much stage, it's electricity. And you have to make sure that there's an ability to get electricity to those places that normally you would have to deal with for another event, but that was really the biggest issue, was they need amplifiers, they need microphones and they need to have that, that piece.
Is anyone else or can we go back to Councilor Franco? Go ahead. Mr. Berry is here from Parks and Rec. Mr. Berry, would you mind coming forward? He knew we were going to ask him questions. It's the Berry Berry, Berry squared. Berry squared, spelled differently, Berry squared. Thank you. Thanks. What do you think about this?
I think it sounds terrific. And I was already making notes, writing venues and developed a list of contacts, so...
Great.
If HR is willing to waive the insurance issues, I think this could easily be done.
Okay. And, Councilor Heath?
What other issues would we have to waive, like?
Yeah, so, I mean, last year, the, was the permitting fees for any public space. If they would normally be required to have an event in a public space, you'd have to waive permitting fees. You could choose not to, but that's something that we're asking municipalities to do. And then the insurance issue last year, you know, we had a small gazebo in Waterford that the town of Waterford owned and they just were not willing to budge on the insurance issue, so we actually picked up the insurance on that. We just did an additional insured on a gazebo for one performance for one girl for that day. And so it was something that, you know, spot, little small things, we can, we'll probably start taking out a broader blanket, additional insured policy, but it certainly won't be anything like you would have from the city or town.
Councilor Parker.
Well, Mr. Berry and...
Mr. Sagami.
Wouldn't we be covered if we had held events anyways? I'm just curious, is it a different type of insurance that we would need? So say if we had it at Sutton Park or Quantic Plains, aren't we already covered to host events there or is this a different type of thing?
Well, I think if, if it was our event, it would be covered, but I think in this case...
It's private.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's kind of a gray area and I think risk management would have to figure out that exactly, but, well, okay, what, can you hear me on this?
Yes, we can.
Okay, basically what we work with is our liability insurance. Usually when there's a different venue, we try to get, you know, them to provide an insurance certificate, but in cases where we've made exceptions, we would still be covered under our old liability insurance.
Okay. Back to Councilor Franco. Back to Councilor Franco.
So, Mr. Berry, would you be willing to be the contact person for this, if people needed, had questions?
I've already given her my business card, so.
You would be, okay.
Yes.
And I believe RTM member Katuski has many music connections, and she's also volunteered, correct, to help connect some musicians with us?
Terrific.
And we're willing to help, too.
I go back to also the business owners, right? This is a great way for a business owner to bring business to their actual, so if they get a great performer in their spot, and that was, that performer has a following, there truly is an advantage to a business who has a storefront or ideal. If you have a group of businesses that are all in kind of one block area or one plaza, the idea is that truly, if everybody has music out front, we can turn, we can package these things and say, look, you can go down to this area, you're going to find for two hours, four different performers. So think about those businesses that have spaces. Restaurants are also the other big one. Restaurants are just, they're used to this, they do music, all they have to do is register and make sure that, because the only way it can get onto the calendar is if we have it registered in there. But restaurants usually have music in June on Friday nights, and it's just additional promotion for them, and additional promotion for those musicians and bands. And then the schools, if we could get some outreach to the schools, right? We'd love to have those emerging young musicians who just want to go play. We had four musicians last year, young kids who had never performed before, one of which performed in Riverfront Children's Center, and the video of it is magical. They were also performers of youth in homeless shelters. And so, I can tell you that those remarks we got from the shelters of having music in, in those spaces was one of, another, just think about those spaces where music can really be a healing and a wonderful thing to have. And then think about the musicians that you want there, like, we don't want to put certain bands in certain places. But, yeah, but there's lots of opportunities for businesses, your nonprofits, libraries, any public space really can be open and having music.
Councilor Zepari?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Mark, what kind of fees are normally charged for people putting on performances in Groton?
It depends on the venue, but we would just waive those fees for.
So you don't need anything from us to waive those fees?
Yeah, I would just, yeah.
Okay. And what, what's, what do you do for rain? Most of these are outdoor performances, do we have alternate venues to bring them indoors?
Yes, so the venues have to provide a rain location, or say that there is no rain location. So when they register their venue, they're actually going to say, we'll be indoors if it rains and we have the same space, or they specify, outdoors, we can have all of this, but indoors, we only have this. And they can say that if it rains, we, we don't have a spot for you. And that's just the risk of having.
Mark, could we make the senior center and our new community center, the Fitch Junior, or Fitch Middle, Old Fitch Middle School available? We have several, we have a number of rooms there that could be used, I suppose, plus that auditorium.
Well, we couldn't, we can't use the auditorium because it's not up to code, but we could certainly use, i- if it's not already scheduled, the multipurpose room, which is the old cafeteria, or we could use the gym in the Groton Community Center, and I think on a Friday night, or Friday during the day, we could certainly, in the afternoon, probably get in a group at the senior center in the main room.
And I would just make the suggestion that if you're, you know, it sounds like Groton's on board, which is great, is that you not try to do everything in the first year, that think strategically about those spots that are really going to help to generate and build momentum for next year. This is not going to go away, we're going to be doing this every year, but really think about trying to centralize and think about those spaces that there are naturally already people in. It's harder to get people to come to a space that day for a dedicate, unless it's for the, you know, just for the performer, right? They're coming to follow that, that performance. So, you know, think about just kind of, you know, not trying to program every space you have for the entire day, maybe one spot for the whole day, and then adding in all these other things as fill-in. Because it's the first year.
Sure.
I'm not going to hold you.
Okay.
We can't look to New London for what they're doing over there.
Okay, is there any other discussion or questions? So there's, there's no action required unless we want to move forward, in which case, we can ask that the manager work with Mr. Berry to move forward with some ideas and perhaps work in conjunction with the mayor and the city to plan something for the town. So is there consensus for that? Any objection? Okay. So we will do that, then, we'll ask the manager to meet with Mayor Hedrick, Mr. Berry, and then Ms. Berry will be available for guidance if so desired.
Yep, we'll be good.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your coming out, this is exciting.
I'm really, really excited to have you all be part of this this year, and we'll make it bigger, better every year, but thank you. I look forward to it. Thanks for having me this evening.
Thank you very much, thank you both. Thank you, Mayor Hedrick, for coming out.
And I'll send the links and stuff so that it can, people can know where to find it.
Okay, great. All right, so we are going to go to 5A now, which is the Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act application on page 12. This is the one for SEC TV. Councilor Parker?
To recommend a resolution setting a public hearing for the 2019 Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act program proposal for May 7, 2019, at 6:30 PM or soon thereafter, I so moved.
Moved by Parker and seconded by Heath. Mr. Reiner is with us, and then we have several people here from SEC TV as well. Mr. Reiner?
Good evening, John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. So this item 5A also would be, is the same initiative and same public hearing that would be held for item 5K under the Neighborhood Assistance Act. So we've actually received five different applications for that. This is really just a pass-through for us, it's something that we hold the public hearing and we just help facilitate this application going through, but it's, aside from a little bit of staff time on our part, it's no cost to the town, they're all good applications that we've received, and staff supports moving forward with the public hearing on May 7, I think, was the day that we'd recommended, as well as supporting the application under 5A, and then once we get to 5K.
So I think we're all familiar with the work that SEC TV does. It's, they do some fine productions over there, and I think some of us have even been part of some of the productions that they've done. So we thank you very much. Are there questions for Mr. Reiner on this particular application, or for the members of SEC TV that came out this evening? Seeing none. Oh, I'm sorry?
I was just going to say that it would seem very appropriate for SEC TV to get involved with the June 21 Music Day, and I think they could make it even more exciting than it is right now.
Yes, it's a good idea. Actually, Wendy has been on a program in the past, and both of them suggested.
Very good. Good. Councilor Franco?
I just wanted to make sure everybody at home knows, this is, there's no cost to the town for any of this, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of 2019-233 Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act application for SEC TV, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, so moved unanimously. Thank you very much for coming out. Okay, we are going to 5K, which is on page 68, please, 5K. Councilor Franco, Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Application, 2019.
Motion to recommend a resolution setting a public hearing for May 7, 2019, for the 2019 Neighborhood Assistance Act proposal for the Groton Community Center.
Wait, wait. We are on 5K. Neighborhood Assistance Act proposal on page 68? 67 is the one I wanted, I think. Hold on. 5K is small neighborhood assist, oh, you want Neighborhood Assistance Act proposals. My apologies, page 68, Neighborhood Assistance Act proposals.
Correct.
Yes, and the motion is on the back, yes, thank you. So this is Franco.
I'll start again.
Yes, please, thank you, ma'am.
Motion to recommend a resolution setting a public hearing for May 7, 2019, for the 2019 Neighborhood Assistance Act Proposals for the Groton Community Center, Sacred Heart School, Riverfront Children's Center, and the Mystic River Congregate. I suggest move.
Second. Moved by Franco and seconded by Parker. Before we begin discussion, I just wanted to disclose that Sacred Heart School is one of the people applying for a Neighborhood Assistance Act grant, and I serve on the school advisory board for Sacred Heart School. Councilor Zepari?
I also serve on the advisory board for the Sacred Heart School.
Thank you. Mr. Reiner?
Could you add in SEC TV to that same listing, because the public hearing would be for all five of those?
Mr. Bert said when they do the notice for the public hearing, he'll incorporate it all.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Do you want to discuss this, sir?
Nothing really to discuss, same as the last item, we're just scheduling the public hearing for this for May 7. Again, this is a pass-through grant, something that we facilitate, no cost to the town other than a little bit of staff time, including now and just running the applications through.
Very good. Are there questions regarding the Neighborhood Assistance Act proposals? Councilor Zepari?
I would just comment that the supporting information that we received with the packet is, is excellent, and it lets us know what the score is, and I think anybody that read that should be fairly well informed and ready to make a vote.
Yes. All right, seeing no discussion, we are voting on, make sure I have the right one this time, 5K, 2019-222, 2019 Neighborhood Assistance Act Proposals. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, so moved unanimously. Mr. Reiner, you're here for 2019-53 as well, right? The Small Cities Community Development Block Grant?
Yes, I am.
Let's go to that one next, Councilor Heath. This is page 67, please, 2019-53 Small Cities Community Development Block Grant, 2019 Application.
I make a motion to recommend a resolution to authorize the town manager to seek CDBG grant funding in the amount of $1,500,000 to begin rehabilitation work at Mystic River Two Congregate to include ADA accessibility, elevate repairs, oh, sorry, elevator repairs, generator replacement, and code compliancy, compliance and energy improvements, I so moved.
Second.
Moved by Heath and seconded by Baumgartner. Mr. Reiner, please. Do you want to tell us anything about it?
I think we've spoken about this application in the past, staff generally, not generally, staff totally supports the application. We've done very well through our CDBG program the last number of years. This past year, the state and the feds have upped the amount that we can apply for, hence why the last number of years, we've gotten an $800,000 grant. This year, we're going for a higher amount.
Very good. Councilor Zepari?
As I remember, when we discussed this previously, there was no matching component for the town of Groton, is that correct?
Correct. There's a match that will come from the grant recipient, but not from the town itself.
Seeing no further discussion, we will vote on 2019-53-3 Small Cities Community Development Block Grant. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, so moved unanimously. And we have one more item for Mr. Reiner, and this is on page 55. And there's no motion required. This is just a 2019-157 Overview of Planning and Development Services Initiative. Mr. Reiner?
So very briefly, we gave an update, we've given the council updates almost every month on some of the different initiatives that we're working on. We had put together a report of our major initiatives over the course of the past year, dealing with our zoning regulatory rewrite, tax increment financing, property redevelopments, the larger TRIP effort, efforts through the Planning Commission, the Zoning Commission, our marketing, economic development efforts, a lot of the applications going through our building officials' office. Just wanted to kind of put that all in writing for people to have, both the council, the RTM, general members of the public, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have of any of these items.
Councilor Atwater?
John, we, I want to say roughly a year ago, maybe last June, the council voted not for Sustainable Connecticut, but for the CCM program on sustainability, and I'm wondering where we stand with that.
So actually, we did vote, the council did vote for us to go after the Sustainable Connecticut, the Sustainable CT. That's an initiative that we're working on right now. We just formed an advisory committee, a staff-based advisory committee, to begin, begin that effort. We had a little bit of turnover in our, our staff and OPDS, and that slowed things down as well as a number of other initiatives driven by the council and others. So that's something we're working on, working with the city of Groton on that, and I think over the course of the next few months, you'll see something from us.
I know there's a, I think, a May 1 deadline for preliminary, is there anything that we as a council or any of us could volunteer to help with?
No, a number of initiatives that we've been working on, honestly, it's a lot of just documenting the programs that we've already done.
Thank you.
And I'm hoping that our new task force can connect with staff at some point and try to merge kind of what they're doing, get some advice from all of you, from the professionals.
Any further discussion for Mr. Reiner? We have one more item for Mr. Reiner when this is done. Councilor Franco?
I have, I have notated in this, and I had some questions, and some of them I just don't, I don't know where they are, and I haven't heard of them. Economic Development Assistance Fund, it says on a 10 Fort Hill Road and for, let me see. This year, funds were used to partially fund infrastructure needs for the 19 units at 10 Fort Hill Road, and for infrastructure for an athletic complex with supporting chiropractor, chiropractic offices on 90 Lender Drive. What is the athletic complex? What is?
So that's on the airport development park there, that's a new CrossFit facility, they're building a whole new building, they occupy a building now that they lease, they're building their own building, I believe that's under construction right now.
Okay, just athletic complexes, have it all different to me. And with the business assistance and attraction, it says, you're receiving approximately, I guess, 30 inquiries a month, and also staff is proactively targeting select businesses to attract them to Groton. Is this really gaining momentum right now? I mean, do you see a trend of any sort?
Yes.
Positive trend?
A very positive trend.
Thank you. And then the Thames River Innovation Project, I was wondering how much, because it states in here that you've helped them find their new director, and you've served as the conduit for state project funding, and you're involved in helping with the Thames River Reconnection Project, and, so I'm wondering, like, how much staff time is, are you putting into that?
Paige is the lead contact and lead staff person for this, he does put a fair amount of staff time into this. This is a larger, a larger regional effort, which is, we're seeing things grow from this. Some business attraction, that sense of place, quality of life, there's a lot of other initiatives that have spun off of this. The undersea consortium of trying to build up more development opportunities and more businesses, so that, you know, one of the concerns that we've heard from the council, from people, is that from a tax-based perspective, we're so reliant on the big, you know, really Pfizer EB, and then, you know, the, the offshoot from the subbase, how can we help attract other businesses here that are complementary to those, as well as standing alone on their own? And some of those have paid off with other business initiatives that we're seeing happen around the town. So it is something, it takes some time, it's also put a lot of state grant funds into the area over the past two years, and we're starting to put together the third-year application of this. Once they had hired staff and director, that took a lot of the effort off of Paige and some of his time. Their executive director recently left, they're in the process of hiring a new one right now, so I think once that happens, it'll take a little bit more time off of his plate.
Okay, thank you.
He thinks it's definitely a worthwhile endeavor for a town to be involved with this, as do I.
All right. So you put in here about the merit conversion for the middle school project, and it states that Boulder Heights property off Clover Avenue is to be developed for recreational purposes. Is that still the plan going forward?
Yes, it is. So it's passive recreation, it's not meant for ball fields, when you look at the property. Deep wanted us to look at it for the viability of it, that's something, working with an architectural firm, landscape architecture firm, they did do a scenario, trying to put a ball field or a soccer field on there, and it's infeasible. So right now, we're developing a trail plan for that area and showing where some parking would be located.
Okay. And then you mentioned Elagrasso, at the very bottom of the hill there, there's what looks like an area for a sign, but then there's also what looks like there's also what looks like a very large retaining wall. And many people are wondering what that is.
I believe most of that area is just the sign. I'll have to, I'm not exactly what area you're talking about. I'd need to see it on a plan.
There's a wall, there's an area that may be the sign, I'm not sure, but there's another much bigger wall, and it looks like there's an electrical, a piece of electrical infrastructure behind it, so I'm guessing it's just a kind of protective wall back there.
Very well could be, yeah.
Okay. And I think that might be it.
Counselor Baumgartner.
I'd just like to note that it was through TRIP that I, previous involvement I had with TRIP that I got to know Paige. And I can personally attest by the fact that, you know, he has shown great interest in the various projects from the beginning, and has been a terrific advocate for the town in terms of recruiting and growing businesses through that outlet. I would also venture to say that perhaps we wouldn't have had, you know, Thayer Mahan move into the new building and, or the older building that will, at Groton Heights, if it weren't for his outreach, business outreach that he had done with Thayer Mahan over the last several years, and cultivating those relationships. So, you know, I think it would certainly behoove, you know, the town to continue working with TRIP in the future, and, you know, I know also in the city, they're launching a wayfinding and charrette process for reconnecting the Hodges Square neighborhood with Groton Bank, which I think will also yield, you know, great economic benefits in the future in terms of revitalizing the business corridor there. So, you know, not for nothing, but, you know, I think it does a lot of good for Groton Town to work with the city, city, Groton City, and our neighbors across the river. So, it's a very unique program, and, you know, I hope we continue with supporting it. And thank you for supporting those efforts as director as well.
Thank you. And I just have one quick question. Under code enforcement, are you doing something about codes for food trucks? Because we have one in town that we get calls on frequently.
That's something that we're looking at, how we can regulate it under our new zoning regulations.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right, anyone else have any questions for Mr. Reiner?
Actually, I'm sorry.
One more, okay.
For the Quantic Bridge Village Design Guidelines, you state that you're going to have a public presentation in the spring of 2019. Do you know when that's happening?
Thank you for that plug. For April 11th at 6:00 PM at the Groton Public Library, yes, we will be having a public presentation to wrap up that project.
So, April 11th, 6:00 PM at the library?
It's a Thursday, so I think I got my date right.
Thank you.
If, there'll be a flyer, a notice posted in the next few days on that.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. And we have one more item for Mr. Reiner. So, that was 5I. We have item 5G, which is on page 43, please. The motion is actually on page 44. And this is 2019-2020 OPDS Title and Job Description Changes for OA2 Positions. I think that's the correct one. Counselor Atwater, please.
To recommend a resolution to approve the two proposed job descriptions as presented and authorized by the Town Manager to fill these two positions, provided there is no increase in full-time positions. I so move.
Second. Moved by Atwater and seconded by Franco. Mr. Reiner.
Good evening, thank you. Bob Zagami and I have been working on this initiative together, and this is something that we've been looking at for a substantial period of time. The OA2 job descriptions haven't really been updated since 1997, and as our job roles have changed through the divisions, through the departments, they've become increasingly more and more technical. So, we've written these as they've, the jobs, especially in these two positions, have taken on more technical roles, specifically to the Inspection Services Technician, doing more direct assistance at the front counter, requiring certifications as time goes on, taking some of the stress or the time needed from our inspectors from the front counter, so they can actually be doing plan reviews and out in the fields doing inspections. Same goes with that Economic Development Technician piece, although not as much as the front counter help, but doing a lot more of the backroom, technical work, our updates and posts on social media, on Facebook, developing a lot of our marketing material, actually like in-design and the programs, and putting all those materials together. Still doing very, our administrative roles within those positions, not a huge jump in salary, but really reflects where that job in both of those positions has morphed into over time. Concerned about making sure that the roles today reflect what the positions are actually doing, and then also looking to the future, when those people move on for those, from those jobs, either through retirement or they leave, when we fill those positions, having an OA2, just a purely administrative person in that job, won't do satisfaction. We need someone that has a level of training in economic development or in inspection services. I don't know if Bob wanted to add any more to that.
No, I couldn't agree more. That's basically what we're moving from, a clerical-type position, not that they won't have clerical tasks to deal with and everything, but basically, this is going to let the people in economic development to do their job, get out there and be making their contacts, et cetera, and have the back office stuff taken care of by the clerical people. Same thing, if we can increase, probably building inspections, whereas these people are out there getting the inspections done and not having to rush back to an office to complete clerical work. I think it's a direction we really should go in.
Very good. Does anyone have questions for Mr. Reiner or Mr. Zagami? By the way, thank you for filling in this evening, Mr. Zagami. Mr. Atwater, Counselor Atwater, I apologize.
I'm a little, I guess, surprised or curious when you say something, it will offload the duties from the building inspectors, plural. How many building inspectors do we have?
So, we have three inspectors. There's Kevin Quinn, the Manager of Inspection Services, Pete Zvinglas, the Assistant Building Official, and then Seamus is our Inspector One. We have a lot of building activity that comes in.
Well, I guess, looking at your list of activity, there was 20 or 30 things, which is about one a week, and I, again, it just, it took me by surprise that that was the case. And in the long run, if you advance these other positions, is it possible someday to eliminate an actual building inspector because of the quality of the people that are being moved up?
If applications or if things coming in slow down, certainly.
We don't want that to happen.
Compared to where we were, I think, maybe seven or eight years ago, we have two or three less inspectors than we used to have. I don't have the numbers exactly in front of me, but I know, yeah, we're definitely a lower number than we used to be. And we're trying to be as efficient as we can with the inspectors that we have.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, and a lot of the applications that you'll see when we do our annual report focus more on the commercial, on the bigger bang for the buck, and you're not seeing all the decks, the roofs, the additions, the mechanical, the plumbing, a lot of that stuff, which is keeping, you know, an inspector and a half or two busy most of the time.
Counselor Heed.
This doesn't entail adding any additional staff or filling vacancies, it's just a change.
Correct. No creation, no additional FTEs. It'll be taking two existing positions and opening them up to then become these two positions.
Thank you.
Seeing no further questions, we will vote on 2019-220 OPDS Title and Job Description Changes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so moved unanimously.
Thank you.
And I think that's it. Mr. Reiner? Now, on to your next meeting. Thank you. All right, so we're going to go back up to the top now to item 5C, and this is Counselor Schmidt, I believe. This is the definition of Resident 2019-212 on page 26, please, and Mr. Berry is still with us.
And there is no motion at this time.
Thank you, Counselor Schmidt. Mr. Berry, do you just want to give a brief background as to what this is about, please?
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
So, the department was asked to, I guess, gather some information about non-resident residents, if you will. So, these are folks that are paying taxes to the town but do not live in the Town of Groton. And I think this, I'm not exactly sure how this, all that started, but I believe there was an inquiry from a business owner who felt that because they're paying taxes to the Town of Groton, that they were, should be considered a resident and would be allowed to utilize that definition when signing up for recreation programs. We do, the towns, or the department's definition of resident is someone whose primary residency is the Town of Groton. And the Groton Town Charter defines the resident as a person residing in the Town of Groton for more than six months. So, we've pretty much followed the Town Charter. We do, for the senior center, programs typically charge $10 more for non-residents, and through recreation, now, that's not for every single program, but on the recreation side, we generally charge about $20 more for someone that's a non-resident. So, we surveyed, we did local, within the region, and a national survey, and the responses, there's a full spectrum of how people, or how communities define residency. Some go as far as to say that if you work in a business in that town, you're considered a resident. Others were, kind of followed what we did. So, there's a huge spectrum of options. I can tell you that where there are, let's see, 1,553 resident, non-resident owners that pay taxes to the Town of Groton. Now, that's probably, as I said in my referral, a little bit high, because there are some folks that are listed multiple times, if they own an apartment complex, they're listed for each unit. So, what the exact number is, I didn't go through and count every single one, but, you know, there may be 1,200 to 1,300 non-resident residents. How that would impact our department if we made those non-resident residents, it's difficult to say. So, I don't know what the impact would be. You know, we do, there's a fair number of people that sign up for our programs that are non-residents, and it does generate additional revenue for us. What the impact of 1,300 people, you know, I don't know how many of those would sign up for our programs. Can we do something like this? We could. It would require somebody to bring in their tax bill, you know, that they've paid it, and we would have to add them into the system manually and then monitor that moving forward. So, that's kind of where we are.
So, just to recap, the two, the first two alternatives, we can't really do, because the definition of resident is provided in the charter, and we cannot change the charter. So, we cannot change the definition of resident.
Right, without going through the process of making a change to the charter.
Right, and we can't change the charter. So, we can't change the definition of resident. So, that kind of eliminates the first two alternatives. Is there any other discussion? Counselor Atwater.
Might I comment? If you eliminate the first two, the third one is do nothing, and that's what we're doing, is we're doing that.
Correct. So, unless someone wants to...
I do have a question, if I might. You mentioned earlier, Mark, that you could waive, I think Counselor Perry asked a question, am I right, something about waiving fees?
On the field fees, sure.
Could you do this in your, at your discretion on an individual basis?
I'm not sure that that's a situation that I'd want to get into. You know, if there was some criteria for waiving that, you know, we do have a scholarship program, and we do have donation money that we have made available to non-residents. So, you know, that's an opportunity, but I'm not sure that I would want to, on a person-by-person basis, decide you have to pay the non-resident fee and you don't. I don't think that would be a very good situation for any of the staff to be in.
And the other thing is, if they're a non-resident taxpayer, that means they own property in Groton, but they also live somewhere else, so they probably would not qualify for a scholarship. Based on need.
Right.
Counselor Zepary.
The only question I have is, how did this get on the agenda? Did you discuss it?
No, well, I was asked to submit this. It's...
Who asked you to submit this?
That came from the Town Manager.
Somebody spoke to us at the council.
I'm sorry?
Counselor Heed?
Sorry, somebody came and spoke to us at the council and requested that we consider it, so we referred to Mr. Berry to take a look.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not here working to make a change.
Right. Okay, so then, it doesn't look like we wish to make any changes. Thank you very much. I'm trying to think if we have anything else for you. Give me one second to take a quick peek. Librarian, Sandy Hall, Obon, please, I think you're sat.
Okay.
Thank you very much, and thank you for working with Ms. Berry as well.
Oh, yeah.
All right, we are on to 5D on page 27, and this is Counselors Perry. There's no motion. If you'd like to tell us a little bit better, we can let the library director do that. Would you prefer to let Ms. Mealy do that?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy's here, would you please come up? Thank you. So, this is 2019-216, Library One and Library Assistant Positions on page 27. Would you just introduce yourself formally, please? Thank you.
Jennifer Mealy, Groton Public Library Director. Good evening.
Would you tell us about the positions, or do you want to defer to Mr. Zagami?
No, that's totally fine. We are looking, we've been on a plan of action since about 2014 to do some reorganization within the library, and of course, that's determined by people either leaving or retiring. So, we're looking at right now is, we've recently promoted somebody within to the Manager of Public Service, and by doing so, we now have a vacant Library Two position open. We would like to thereby fill that position with a Librarian One, which would be a lower salary GMEA position. So, that would be step one. We are also looking to possibly hire within for that Librarian One position, and by doing so, it would then move another position around. We're hoping to vacate a Librarian Assistant One, which is a lower level, with, instead of a full-time, we want to fill it with a part-time position. So, with all the reorganization, restructuring, we'd be looking at a significant cost savings, but also streamlining some processes in the meantime. So, that's what we're looking to do. Be happy to answer your questions.
Mr. Zagami, did you want to add anything to that, sir?
Well, there is a savings here, too, that we, you know, realize, too. It's probably about, we calculate that something around 38, 35,8, something like that, by having the position to go down from a Library Two to Library One, and the other position to bring up the Assistant Library, which would be the part-time job, is 20 hours a week, as opposed to 35.
So, we're looking at, by doing this, saving $35,800?
Yes.
That's significant. Any counselors have questions for Counselor Heed?
Are we adding any staff, or is this just reshuffle?
Reshuffle is what we're looking to do. However, the, should the librarian part-time position, the assistant, become open, we would like to, you know, open that out to the public, but also encouraging people within the library to apply.
Okay, I think we're about to enter the budget season, and we need to be cognizant that when we get to the budget season, if we remember last year, when we shift, not when we shift people around, but it's hard to make cuts once you have staff on the books. So, I would, I wouldn't be opposed to moving somebody around within the library, but I would be opposed to adding additional staff. So I would, I wouldn't be opposed to moving somebody around within the library, but I would be opposed to adding additional staff to the library, if I'm understanding that right. It sounds like you're not, but then eventually you might.
Well, by possibly, by vacating a Library Assistant, a full-time position, we would fill it with a 20-hour position. So it's already there. It's just a matter of filling that vacancy. It's not creating a new position.
Counselor Parker?
We've already approved these. It's Items 1 and 2. She's just, they're lowering from a Librarian Two to a Librarian One position, which we've already approved, and changing the Library Assistant position to a part-time person. So the positions are already there. We're not, she's just lowering someone's hours. But it's already there. We've already approved it previously, just to let the public know. This is not adding or subtracting an additional person. It's just cutting someone's hours down to a 20-hour a week instead of a 35-hour a week, which means the other person, the Librarian Two position's going down to a Library One, which would be a lower pay, which is still a savings. So she's already reducing her budget for us before she even comes to the budget session.
That is correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anything else? Counselor Atwater?
I would only suggest that Mr. Zagami might want to do this with his other departments as well if we're saving $35,000.
Okay, if there is no further discussion, this doesn't require a vote, just consensus of the council. So is there any objection to Item 2019-216?
No objection.
Very well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I think you're all set, right? Thank you for coming out.
Thank you very much.
We are on to 5E, which is Sandy Hollow on page 35. And I believe we're back to Counselor Bob Gardner. This is 2019-218, Sandy Hollow Road Tree Trimming and Limb Removal Public Hearing. Counselor Bob Gardner?
I'll make a motion to recommend a resolution setting a public hearing date for May 7, 2019, for the Sandy Hollow Road Tree Trimming and Limb Removal Project, and request that the town council act on the request after the public hearing has closed. So moved.
I'll second that, okay. Any discussion on this? Any questions that Mr. Zagami could answer? So I think if you look at the two alternatives, schedule the public hearing or not schedule the public hearing, the tree work will not be completed and Eversource will leave the area. The electrical distribution system will be subject to increased chances of outages due to falling tree limbs and dead wood. Counselors of Perry?
The tree trimming project, is that to be conducted by the town or by Eversource?
I was on the understanding, I might be misunderstanding this, but I thought that Eversource had started the project and that, no, that's wrong?
I don't believe so. I don't believe that's what the tree warden told me today. There were, there were some trees cut by Public Works because they were diseased.
Okay, that's...
That's what was, that's the work that was previously done. Eversource, we were supposed to do this a while back, and Eversource pulled back and wouldn't give us a date. That's why it's coming back to us now. So Eversource has finally said we're ready to go ahead with this, so...
So this will be at their expense?
Yes. That's what I understand it to be. Anything else? Counselor Franco?
So I had, I had questions on this, but there's nobody here to really answer them, I don't think.
What do you need?
I wanted to talk to Public Works. I read an article today that on Eastern Connecticut, they're having many diseased trees and dead trees and many towns up and down the East Co, I mean, the eastern part of Connecticut is having to allocate money to taking care of them, and also Eversource as well. So I'm wondering how badly we've been hit and who's been out, and have they been out checking them? Because I guess it's really bad right now.
Mr. Schneider is our tree warden?
Yes.
Do you want to take this? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm not sure. I don't got the answers for that, so...
He is our tree warden, so he is the one that's in charge of the inspection, and he is out there and about checking things because, as I said, he was just out on Sandy Hollow and they removed some trees that were in pretty bad shape. If you would go out and take a look, I was out there, and the one tree that they cut, the whole center is all hollowed out. So they are out there doing what they need to be doing to protect.
I just know one of the towns had, they had stated their, they have like 600 trees they're going to need to take down. So I'm just wondering if this is a major problem on the east side of Connecticut, if it's going to be hitting us?
So you could ask Mr. Zagami to have Mr. Schneider, our tree warden, report back to us, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on setting the public hearing? Seeing none, all those in favor of 2019-218, Sandy Hollow Road Tree Trimming and Limb Removal Public Hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. I'm just going to make a note of that as well. Give me one minute, please. Ms. Landry is with us for 5F. 2019-221, Bonds to be Issued in FYE 2019. This is on page 36, and we are at Counselor Parker, and I believe the motion is on page 37, please.
To recommend a resolution approving the amount of bonds to be issued in fiscal FYE 2019. So moved.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Franco. Ms. Landry, hello?
As you know, in November 2016, the voters passed a referendum, 184,000, no, 184,500,000 Groton 2020 Plan for the Consolidated Middle School and the two elementary schools. That, at this time, we're ready, we've had expenditures related to the project, and we're ready to issue long-term bonds as well as notes for this project and the sewer project, which includes the pump stations, replacing and updating the pump stations, two pump stations at the treatment plant. So I have prepared, the bond council has actually prepares a resolution, but I have, in your packet, you have the standard, what we give when it's time to issue bonds, because the council has to authorize the amount of bonds to be issued. So the first, it was called Section A, because this will be a long-term project, and thinking in 2016, it was anticipated to have five note issues and five bond issues. So this will be the first one. So as we go through this project, Section A will be updated because there are no previous bonds at this point. So it's 184 million. We're going to issue 20 in long-term bonds. We'll leave 164 of the authorization remaining. Section B is what we always do, an estimated mill rate of what this will be. It's 20-year bonds, 20 million. Bond couns, excuse me, our financial advisor has used an estimate of 3.12%. We do anticipate the bond sale to be next month, and usually, as happened last year when we bonded, we should know the final debt service by the time we adopt a budget at the end of the year. If you recall, last year, we had to increase it just a little bit because rates had gone up. But you'll see that fiscal 2020 will be the first year that the full principal and interest will be due, and that's estimated at a 0.46 of a mill rate increase. And we always use $100,000 when we compare that to assessment, thinking it's easier, my house is 100 or 200 or 300, for you to use the $46 to do the multiplication for your own home. And then the next page is, Section C just gives a comparison of adding the new debt. This is, this comes from our debt policy. It provides you with the current bonds, the new addition. We're at 37 million. We're going to add 20, we'll be at 37, and then, as you know, the state gives us a maximum that we can borrow. So the next session, section, gives you those percentages. And we're at the 5.2. The 16.7 compared to, oh, the 5.2 is estimates debt service of the general fund expenditures for 2020, the proposed budget. And then the section below just gives you the breakdown of the outstanding issues of the 37 million that we have outstanding now.
If you could just address on this, the Section B, the FYE 2020, the 1.7 million, that's been budgeted into the manager's proposed budget?
Yes, we did. We have included the 1.7 million in debt service, and you'll see that in the budget. That's the increase in debt service.
And even, even with that in, we're coming at a zero mill rate increase?
Yes, we are. Using the 1.5 million of fund balance.
Yes.
So then the, the final section, it's called, it's E at the bottom. It shows you the existing debt outstanding, and then the new 20 million, so it shows you the total debt, which will be added 20 million. So we'll be going from the 44 to the 71 million total debt service over the life of the bonds. And then the final is, I'm not sure, this is a graph of existing and proposed debt. Mine's in black and white, but I think yours is probably in color. It's a little easier to read or not.
Yes.
So we are looking to, as I said, 20 million in long-term bonds. We also will be issuing notes, short-term notes, 15 million. The town's policies, when we have a project of this size, that we issue long-term bonding, but when we don't know what our expenditures will be, we try to project out either 12 to 18 months. But we issue the notes, which is short-term. They're only for a year. So when we issue the long-term bonds, a year from now, they will pay off those notes. They'll come due in April of next year. We never want to bond too much. You always want to make sure that, you know, you try to, it's a happy medium to try to get just enough cash. You don't want to have too much, but you want to have enough to cover your expenditures. And as you know, the schools, the middle school is supposed to be up, completed by June of 2020. So we anticipate that they, now that the contracts have been issued, the expenditures on this are going to be significant in the upcoming months in the next year.
We have questions. So Counselors of Perry?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to congratulate you on this. The die was cast on our incurring marked increase in expense in 2016, when the rest of the people in the town decided we wanted to spend 184 million dollars to build new schools. So now we're starting, we have to finance that.
Yes.
And I think 20 million dollar bond, I'm surprised that you can get away with that at this point. With three schools beginning construction, and you're going to complete the construction, I think, in the next two years. What you've done surprises me, and I'm very pleased about it. I'm not pleased about having the rates go up, but as I say, this was something that was decided long ago.
It was, and the 20 million of the bonds, you know, we will be getting the state grants. We're allowed to submit for those, and as soon as we can submit and get grant money coming in, we will, and that will offset the cost of the bonds, I mean, the amount of the bonds.
Yeah. Well, congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Counselor Atwater?
Just following up on Counselor Perry, is 20 million the total that we're going to have to borrow?
No, we expect that probably will be four additional after this.
Okay, 87, roughly.
You know, the 84 million is part of the town's share.
Okay.
So as the, as the middle school finishes and the elementaries come on, it will be a continuing, but this bond issue is just for the middle school.
And I have a few miscellaneous or whatever. First, first, the notes, the anticipation notes. If you use those for a year, do you risk the change in the interest rate going from 3.12 to something much higher? Or possibly lower?
Well, yes. You know, interest rates, they fluctuate. But when you issue the notes, it is on the lower end of the yield curve, so we anticipate notes will come in at maybe like two and a half, two and a quarter to two and a half. But again, it's a fine line we walk when, in determining the amount of bonds that we issue, because we don't want to get ourselves into where we have too much cash. You know, we don't want to have a lot of cash sitting on the, in the books. We want to be able to spend it. And that comes down from bond council because there are strict requirements as to how much you can bond at, because they're tax-exempt bonds, so you hope that you get a better rate for that. And you don't want to spend and have that money, have money sitting in your bank account earning interest maybe at a higher rate than you're paying. So it's a, it's a very fine line we walk in trying to make that distinction between bonds and notes.
Okay.
And we did look at the cash flows. Arcadas, who is, I believe they're called, they're called a project manager. They look at the cash flows and they do the projections for us.
And under your chart, B, it's showing a 3.12% interest rate, and my math comes out to an interest payment in the first year of 624,000, not 717, and I'm wondering...
I think it's because the way the formula is, because we use the principal, level principal payments. You say your interest payment?
I took the million and multiplied it by 0.0, or point, yeah, 0.0312.
I can check that formula for you.
And it came out that...
Okay.
And then the other thing on that same page, when you show the estimated mill rate increase, that's not compounding or adding. I mean, it's, what we have to pay this year will be an increase of 4.6, but then technically, next year, it would go down
Right, it goes down.
0.01, because it, okay.
Because we're basing it on what 1 mill equals in the grant list.
Right, okay. And then my last question or comment, and I don't know if this is for whomever. Because of the, the issue with the original bond, saying that we would do the middle school or the elementary schools to be placed like new, and then we had a referendum to change that, but then it was found out that the town clerk's office did it erroneously, and now we're back to that issue again. If you have the wording in here, as I think it's, I'm reading it saying renovate like new, does this mean after the vote or the referendum vote or whatever, we're then going to go, have to go back again and change the wording?
No, are you referring to what I have in my referral? Because I had said the number 16, right. I didn't put the information in there about the, what's going on with the middle schools now, but when that ref, either the December referendum is validated, or if we have to go through legislative, and we get the language to say the, build as new, we don't need to go back. Once, this, the issue right now that's pending, either at the referendum or General Assembly, that'll finalize that, and it will be build as new.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Bob Gardner?
So I believe the bands, are they rated by Moody's exclusively by Moody's?
All three. We go to Fitch, SOK, and Moody's.
So now, are they rated separately from other bonds on the books, the bands?
Well, they'll all, when we have the rating agency review, they'll rate the 20 million in bonds, the 15 million, and the sewer bonds, all in one review.
Okay. And do you, off the top of your head, do you know the, our current rating?
I don't have that. I don't know off the top of my head, but I do have it. We, Fitch is a double A, Moody's is a double A II, and Standards is a double A plus.
And so when we're, you know, making our pitch in the near future about keeping a steady rating or improving it, what do we have to do on our part to ensure that, you know, our fiscal policies are sound?
Well, we just, we just had our pre-rating meeting this morning with our financial advisor, and he has said that he expects the rates will probably remain the same. But we had a good conversation about who's going to get all the information together, and he puts a very nice package together. And we'll have the meeting, I believe it's sometime, maybe April 8th or 9th. I don't have the calendar with me, but it's sometime the 1st of April. We'll be meeting with all three. Oh, I'm sorry, I just remembered. It's April 1st and 2nd.
Well, based on just how you teach us and tell us the numbers, I know you'll do well, so that's a book.
I sure hope so. I think, I think we have a lot of good things to tell the rating agencies. I mean, you know, we went to the market last year, and then we had the issues with the state of Connecticut, which have kind of smoothed out a little bit. But I think we're in good shape. We, you know, '18 was a, was a good year, and I think '19's going to end up being a pretty good year, so. I think we have some good information to pass on to them.
Great. Are there any other questions for Ms. Landry or Mr. Zagami? Okay, seeing none. We will vote on 2019-221, Bonds to be Issued in FYE 2019. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, so moved unanimously. And I think, are you set?
I'm all set.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And we have another item. We have 2019-230, Police, Title and Job Description Changes, and this is on page 51, and are we at Counselor Parker? No. No? Counselor Franco? Or Counselor Bob Gardner?
Counselor Franco.
A motion to recommend a resolution to approve the two proposed job descriptions as presented and authorize the town manager to fill these two positions, provided there is no increase in full-time positions. I see move.
2019-230 Police Title and Job Description Changes for OA 3?
I am, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Page 51. So noted.
All right, scratch that.
Yep.
All right, a motion to recommend a resolution to approve the non-union executive assistant police job description. I see move.
Second.
Then seconded by, moved by Franco, seconded by Atwater, yes. Mr. Zagami.
Sure. When comparing the responsibilities of the Office Assistant III to the responsibilities described within the Executive Assistant P D, it clearly articulates that the new job description is specifically designed to be incorporated to the needs and requirements of the police department, as outlined under the duties and responsibilities. There's an emphasis here on confidentiality, which really needs to be adhered to both internally and externally, and when dealing with public safety. But in the broader sense, the position change is one that has the ability to convey the chief's directives and instructions to the division heads and other staff. But ultimately, this position may be the first, I would say, contact with citizens, media, and other law enforcement agencies when faced with emergencies. So I think what we're seeing here is a position that's really changed and being more tailored toward the, I would call him a new police chief, even though he's been there a couple of years. And this has really, really increased the responsibilities. And you'll notice that it's, if you had seen the Office Assistant III, it's basically sheer clerical compared to the new duties that this person's taken on. So we would not be replacing an individual here, we would just be changing her job description, and naturally, there'd be an increase with that.
And this is a brand-new job description, correct?
Brand-new job description, yes.
Are there questions for Mr. Zagami? Counselors, a pair, sorry.
What is the increase?
The increase is about $2,300.
A year?
A year.
Thank you.
Counselor Heath.
Just confirming what you just said, there is no increase in the number of staff. It's just a job description recategorization, basically.
Right.
Any other questions regarding this position? Seeing none. All those in favor of 2019-230 Police Title and Job Description Changes for OA 3, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so moved unanimously. Thank you. And let me just run back through, I think we have one item left. We bounced around, so I have to make sure I didn't miss anything. Okay, I think all that's left is five L.
Correct.
And this is on page 108, 2019-232 Town Council Rule Changes. And how appropriate, we're on Counselor Heath, I think.
Yes.
Okay.
So we met, the rules committee met, Counselor Parker and Counselors Zepary and myself, just to do a couple of small housekeeping changes to the town council rules. The first one, under Rule 9, Committee and Referrals, we're just deleting the Public Safety Committee. We've never staffed it, it's never been, we just haven't used it, so no reason to have it. And then the second item, which was actually more important, but probably doesn't matter either, again, just housekeeping, we, in Rule Number 10, Committee Procedures, we changed the adjourn to recess. So the Cal has one budget meeting, which consists of several sessions. Each session adjourns to a definite time, fix the time to which to adjourn, so we just changed that to recess.
So that's Rule 10 L?
Rule 10, yes.
Okay, you're changing adjourn to recess.
Recess. Just two very small changes, nothing else. So I made the motion to accept the rules.
And you will have that in writing for clerical staff to transcribe, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. So can you just read it one more time for everybody so they're clear?
So, Rule 9, Committee and Referrals, we deleted the Public Safety Committee. And Rule 10, Committee Procedures, letter L, changed the word adjourn to the word recess. I see move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Heath, seconded by Atwater. Is there any discussion on the two changes? Counselor Atwater.
Just a question, does, do we then recess to a date specified, or do we just recess?
We recess to the next meeting, the next...
Date specified.
Time definite.
Could be. Counselor Schmidt?
I was going to say, date specified.
We still do that same process?
Right. Thank you.
So, our first meeting is going to be Saturday this week.
Right.
So when that meeting finishes, the items on the agenda for that day, we won't adjourn, we will recess till the next meeting.
Which will be April 1st.
Which is April 1st.
But I seem, I seem to recall last year that we always had to specify the next date.
You're correct. We did.
I'm wondering if we still do that?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Any other discussion on the two changes? Counselor Franco.
Can you explain why Public Safety Committee is being removed?
Public Safety was put into the rules per the request of Counselor Moravsek, but he never, he never staffed it, never put it together, so it was a personal interest of his. He never explained why he wanted it to be on, it was just a request when we were doing the rules.
Any other discussion on the two changes? Okay, so seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of the two rule changes as presented by Counselor Heath, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so moved unanimously. And let me just go back here and check and make sure we have missed anything else. I neglected at the beginning to ask Mr. Zagami if he had any calendar and communications items.
I'm sorry.
I neglected to ask you if you had any calendar and communications items. Is there anything you wanted to report out, sir?
No.
Thank you. So we have covered all of the new business items. We are on to review of agenda items. Does anyone have anything else? Counselors, a pair.
I wish to give notice of an intent to make a motion to rescind the council's vote on Counselor Atwater's motion to terminate our agreement with the No Ink Gardens Task Force.
Okay, one second. Can you, could you please write that down for us? Thank you. Because I need to present that to the clerk, and if you could just say it one more time, I'm trying to keep track of it, too. So you're giving notice to rescind?
Yes.
And what is it you want to, you're going to make a move to rescind at our next?
Correct.
Okay, and go ahead, please.
The council's vote on Counselor Atwater's motion to terminate the agreement with the No Ink Gardens Task Force.
I don't think you have to be in the prevailing side to, to rescind.
We went through this last time, and it's, anyone can make a motion to rescind.
I think it's okay. Very good. All right. Any other, other business? All right, seeing none.
Can I just, just...
Do you have other business?
I'm just questioning what his motion's going to be. We can do that in a town council meeting, it doesn't have to be done in the town.
I believe you meant, do you mean the next Cal, or do you mean the next council meeting?
The next Cal.
Next Cal.
That was a motion that was carried in a Cal.
So that would be, do you have a date? Let me look.
It's the second Tuesday in April.
Which I'm trying to find the date. April 9th. Not right. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I make a motion to adjourn. Moved by Parker. Is there a second to adjourn? I'll second that. Everybody's just sitting here. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Who wants to stand? Abstaining? None, so moved unanimously. We are adjourned at 8:17.